It's Carrera.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Richland County Special Call Meeting for January 18th, 2022. And at this time, this meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Here. Here. Here.
Present.
Present.
Allison Teresha.
Present.
Joe Walker.
Present.
Gretchen Baron.
Here.
Over to Walker.
Here.
Jessica Mackey.
Here.
Cheryl English.
Present.
Shaqis Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, which shows up as approval of the minutes. However, adoption of the agenda, which is listed as Item 3, should have been the second item. So I'm going to skip Item 2 and go straight to Item 11, with the entertainment motion for adoption of the agenda. The move.
Second.
All right, who was the, who made the motion? Ms. Baron made the motion. Who seconded the motion?
McBride.
And Council. Council McBride seconded the motion. Okay, at this time, well, any discussion?
Just a clarification. The motion is to move Item 3 up to ahead of Item 2 with that amendment, to adopt an agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill Manilowski.
Yes.
Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda?
The move.
Does it second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Yvonne McBride moved to adopt.
Okay.
That is Cheryl English.
All right, any discussion? Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, take the role.
Bill Manilowski.
Yes.
Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Here.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Item 3, which would be approval of the minutes. Item 3A, is there a motion?
Move to, McBride, move to approve special call meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Baron.
Okay, it's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, at this time, take the vote.
Bill Manilowski. Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, at this time, next item on the agenda is Item 3B, approval minutes for the zoning public hearing from December 16th, 2021. I entertain a motion.
Move for approval of zoning public hearing meeting to by McBride.
A second?
Second, Cheryl English.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Bill Manilowski. Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I apologize.
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. As it relates to the special call meeting minutes, I just want to point out that I've mentioned to the clerk that there are some Scrivener's errors. I didn't mention them when we voted because the page numbers here don't correspond to the page number of the agenda, so I thought we weren't. I didn't realize we were approving those minutes, but I'm listed as having both moved and seconded several motions, and I may have done one, but I probably didn't do both, so the clerks know which those are.
Okay. Don't note it, Ms. Newton. Next item on the agenda is Item 3C, which is our special call meeting minutes from December 16th, 2021. I entertain a motion.
Who to approve?
Is there a second?
Second, Baron.
Okay, I believe Mr. Pugh was the maker of the motion. Any discussion? Being known, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Bill Manilowski.
Yes.
Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride. Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is Item 3D, which are the minutes from the regular session from January 4th, 2022. I entertain a motion.
Every since the move.
There a second?
McBride, second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? Ms. Newton's hand first, Mr. Malinowski. Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've already mentioned to the clerks that one of my votes was recorded incorrectly.
Don't note it. Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I don't want this to get lost. On page 22, first and second paragraph, I had asked about some information at this particular meeting as to statistical data. It was told that it would be provided later, and I know I haven't gotten it yet, and I want to make sure that that, at least I get it. It says information to council members, so I'll make sure everybody gets that.
Don't note it, Mr. Malinowski. Okay, so any further discussion? There being none, now, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Bill Manilowski.
Yes.
Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4A, and before we get to this agenda, well, this agenda item, rather, I'd just like to say that the purpose of the item is to receive feedback and input from the public as it pertains to redistricting. For those of you who are in the audience, as well as those that may be listening, virtually, the process known as redistricting, it takes place every 10 years in response to population changes. Some of you out there, you may be affected, as, you know, some may end up with different council representation. Once this process is completed, but rest assured that no one is going to lose a council member. This is, you know, this is not going to be a situation where you see at the federal level, at the state level, where someone may have lost, you know, a state representative or a house representative. No one is losing a county council seat, but we are drawing lines in response to population changes. So just know that when this process is over, again, everyone, you know, you're not losing a county council seat. So with that in mind, Item 4A, as an ordinance establishing new electoral districts for the election of members of Richland County Council pursuant to United States Census of 2020 and in compliance with Section 4-9-90 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, has anyone signed up to speak? Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would just like to make sure that the clerks pay attention to the time. Anyone that signs up to speak or has sent in an email for reading, that we keep to our two-minute rule, and I would like to write now, in the event we get to the point of time that we're going over what our rules allow, I would, so that everyone can speak, this is an important matter, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules now in order to let everyone speak or have the mail heard, no more than two minutes.
Second.
Second, so Mr. Malinowski is the maker of the motion. Ms. Baron, I believe, seconded the motion. Ms. Newton seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Bill Manilowski.
Yes.
Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston. Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And, Madam Vice Chair, anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have six individuals that have signed up to speak today. The first is Rick, is it Smoke or Smock? And I may have your, yes, sir, would you please come forward to the mic? It's redistricting, sir. Do you have comments related to redistricting? If you would, sir, can you state your first and last name? Also, spell it along with your address, please?
Yeah, Rick Smoke, S-M-O-A-K, no E, and I'm a smokeless smoke. Anyway, I'm at 725 Walters Lane, Columbia, 29209. And I think we need to divide the districts so they're a little more evenly distributed instead of having one heavy side and one light side. Right now, it's one heavy side and one light side, and it was brought to my attention through some others that we need to consider getting it a little more evenly so we get whatever.
Thank you so much.
What else, Ms. Mackey?
Next signed up is Michelle Huggins. And if you would, state your first and last name, spell, as well as your address, please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Huggins, M-I-C-H-E-L-E-H-U-G-G-I-N-S. I live at 1111 South Kilburn Street in the Rosewood area, but specifically the South Kilburn area. Thank you, Richland County Board members, for allowing me to speak today regarding the redistricting of the South Kilburn area. I am asking you to please revisit your plans to take Hickory Street, Elizabeth Darby, Old Clayton, Timber Lane, Cole, Nephi, Rose Drive, Lotus, Hibiscus Street, and Hydrangea Street off of the designated area for the South Kilburn area. That is actually right now zoned for Allison Teresha. She has been a terrific representative for Richland County for our area. We have another area, excuse me, over Timber Lane and Tall Pine. We've had no representation from Richland County except for Allison Teresha. This is an overlay in the South Kilburn area, not at Estou court or Central Rosewood. We need our representation. We meet every month, every Thursday of every month. I am in no way showing any disrespect for Ms. English. I want to let know, I already know that she has a huge area. We meet every Thursday, the first Thursday of every month. Allison Teresha has been there 95% of the time, and when she cannot attend, she lets us know. With Ms. English having such a broad area in the lower Richland area, there is no way that she would be able to attend our meeting and also be able to attend a meeting in lower Richland. They speak very, very highly of her on Facebook, and I do not want to discredit her for this. This area needs to stay with us. It is part of the South Kilburn area, totally different from Estou Court or Central Rosewood. This will be pulling individuals.
Ma'am, that will be your time.
And you reached your time limit. Thank you, ma'am.
We have Whitney Denton. Thank you. If you would, first and last name, spell it along with your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Whitney Denton, W-H-I-T-N-E-Y-D-E-N-T-O-N. I live at 1315 Hibiscus Street, resident of the South Kilburn neighborhood. I also serve on the South Kilburn Neighborhood Association. I am speaking not just for my neighborhood, but this area that is going to be pulled is me. I live on Hibiscus. This little area that is going to be pulled out of District 5 into District 10 is me. I am across from South Kilburn Elementary. I am where the footbridge is between Lotus and Ott. I'm on Devil's Ditch Creek. How many people know what I just said? It is a random little area that most people don't know. We are a community that has such strange needs compared to other areas in the city. We really are, and we are a strange bunch of folks, and anybody who lives in the neighborhood will tell you that in a good way. But the needs of our urban community that is extremely diverse, both demographics and socioeconomic status, the relationship we have built with Councilwoman Teresha since she has been a member, it would, I would feel like all of my work is gone because I have lost that relationship. And as a former educator, we stress how important relationships with students, parents, and the community is, and when we lose that, we lose that support. Not to mention, I would then be served by an individual who I hear nothing but great things about, but my voice wasn't allowed to vote for. And that bothers me because I vote in every election. Whether or not it is a runoff, I am a former government teacher, so I vote, and I am that obnoxious constituent.
Time has expired. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jonathan Kirkwood. If you would, state your first and last name, spell, along with your address, please.
Jonathan, J-O-H-N-A-T-H-A-N, Kirkwood, K-I-R-K-W-O-O-D. Address is 2062 Watermark Place. It's in District 5. I'm representing the NAACP, the Columbia branch, and there's three specific areas we wanted to look at. One was District 9. Currently, in the NAACP's proposal, it has a 48% black population. The district is 43%, so we recommend going with the, the map as drawn by the NAACP, as it helps empower those that live in that area to be able to vote for a candidate of their choice. Second is the, the way that District 3 and 7 are currently drawn in the proposal. Those both have over a 65% black population, and while the majority is fine, we think that those excess of people can be put into other districts so that those individuals can have an impact in those districts that they represent. And the third and final area where we are supporting the map drawn by the NAACP is for precinct splits. As the map is currently proposed, there are 42 of the 149 precincts that are going to be split. In the NAACP's proposal, only six are going to be split. If somebody who lives in an area where I can turn the corner and I'm out of the city of Columbia and into the county, it does get confusing when there are people within a precinct that have a different set of representations. So for those three reasons, we strongly recommend that this group consider adopting the map that the Columbia, that the NAACP has drawn, as we think that our constituents with that map will be able to better vote for those people whose votes, whose values are consistent with theirs. Specifically, the District 9 issue our address, District 3 and District 7, and moving those people so that they're not so condensely packed, and also to try not to split as many precincts as currently will be split with the proposal. Thank you so much, all of you, for your time.
Mr. Kirkwood.
Next, we have McLean, is it Todd? McLean Todd?
John, John.
What, sir?
Do you want to come to the mic, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and if you will, when you get to the mic, speak to the mic, give us your first and last name, spell it along with your address, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is John. My last name is McLean. I reside at 1703 Oak Grove Court. I live in the county, one block from the city. I'm here to say that it's like, it's one-sidedness now. I mean, you got incumbents who run unopposed because they can't win. When you draw a district line in favors of black over white or white over black, it's not fair. It should be split, where people have a choice to vote for the member who is representing county council or not representing county council. I mean, to me, it's one-sidedness, and I think they ought to be split evenly. I mean, I think there's two Republicans and nine Democrats. Well, I don't know where the Republican Party is. I guess they don't have no candidates to run against nobody, because you got guaranteed seats, and I don't believe nobody should have guaranteed seats. It should be fair elections, where I could vote for this person. elections, where I could vote for this person or not vote for that person. And we all know the incumbents win ninety-nine out of a hundred times. Not all of them, but some of them do because people, I talk to people every day, what's the use to vote? And they want people to vote, and then they change their mind, hey, what's the use to vote? They go run unopposed anyway. I ain't gonna vote. I say, well, that's your choice. You still have a right to vote for you. What right do I have? They've been taken away from us. That's what they tell me. Our name of rights are being taken away from us, and what rights do I have? I can't make a choice who I want to vote for anymore? I mean, like I say, it's one-sidedness. And that ain't the way it's supposed to be when you want to vote for somebody. It ought to be, well, if I want to vote for this person, I can. If I want to vote for the incumbent, I can't. But I'd rather have a new guy in here every now and then, but sometimes it's impossible.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. I missed out, sir.
All right. Thank you for listening to me.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Next is Phil Buck.
Oh, no to me.
Okay, so you would not like to speak?
Not at this time. I need to get more educated.
All right, well, thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that concludes the list of participants that signed up to speak at the hearing tonight.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Let me just say to, you know, again, the listening audience, as well as to the folk who took time out of your busy schedules to come down here tonight for this public hearing, please know that we are listening in earnest, and that, you know, your comments, just know that as a council, as a body, we're going to take those comments and give them serious consideration as we, you know, make decisions about the redistricting process between tonight and the final reading, which will take place on February the eighth. And, Madam Vice Chair, do we have any comments that were provided online or sent in?
Yes, we do. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we do. Two of them have been addressed, and two of them will be read. We also have a special request from Ms. V. Henley to be able to speak.
Henley, is she present? Okay. Ms. Henley, just come on down. You can go to that microphone, which is closest to you, and state your name and address, and as the Madam Vice Chair said, you know, tonight, countless, countless times, to just spell out your name, okay?
Sure. My name's Viola Henley, V-I-O-L-A-H-E-N-D-L-E-Y. I live at one-oh-four Alabama Street, Columbia, South Carolina, two-nine-two-oh-one. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. The Olympia Village would be best served by District Five. Over the years, our District Ten representatives, representatives have had such a huge area to have to cover. It's practically impossible to have done. They've never been able to address the uniquely urban issues we face. In fact, most of our urgent needs have been spearheaded by the District Five council people, and this goes all the way back to Bernice Scott, to Kit Smith. At their very best, District Ten has such the large area, they can't possibly make it to all the meetings and understand the uniquely urban issues that our neighborhood faces. And we would just ask that there be reconsideration for the Olympia Village to be placed into the District Five area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. And Madam Clerk, I believe you said that from this point onward, there are comments that were submitted in writing, and so whenever you're ready, you or someone in your office can read those comments into the record and just be mindful of the fact that there's a two-minute limit on comments.
Our deputy clerk, Only, is going to read those comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Only, you're recognized, ma'am.
Yes, sir. The first one is from Sherry Jaco. Her comment is, why is District Ten so much bigger geographically? Seems part of District Ten Olympia is more similar to District Five demographically. All right. And the next one is from Ms. Yolanda, doesn't have a last name. Will this redistricting cause taxes to increase? I'm paying too much for property taxes already. Will this redistricting cause unfairness when certain money is granted, given to our state for whatever reason? Will this redistricting target certain groups because of where they live or don't, who they know or don't, who really benefits from this redistricting? And the last one is from Oesha Kelly. I currently own property in the town of Gadsden, South Carolina. As a property owner and registered voter, I would like to see my town have a representative of county council. With all the recent updates and infrastructure, as Gadsden is considered an opportunity zone in the area, I would like a representative that is aiding and creating and developing so that those of us in that community can have insight as well as a voice for the community here. Please consider my request when resigning or redesigning the county. All the comments I have.
Comments? Okay. Well, there being no further comments, this hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is Item Five. I would entertain a motion.
The move, Baron.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly, moved to properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there be no discussion, Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Bill Monelowski. Derek Pugh.
Yes.
Yvonne McBride.
Yes.
Paul Livingston.
Yes.
Allison Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Gretchen Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Jessica Mackey.
Yes.
Cheryl English.
Yes.
Shaqis Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is adjourned.